Work. That's all of it. And it is budgeted for this year. As I walk. If you want to sidewalk. House fifty percent. A stop. Die once.
I think there is.
West Guard. Do what?
West Guard.
Okay.
I'm giving my ten. They don't. You know. It's still. Exciting. It's on. Are you here? Yeah. Mr. Bishop. Well, I don't need to present this because it's not even on the agenda. Said. Five K. Yeah, but the city doesn't have this. What does it taste to them once they'll send connected copies? Not gonna break. Oh, no, I just same trading house. October four. Well. So. For information. We still have. Yeah. So yes, the only thing you've got. This isn't even a junkie. That's for. Especially. Also. As shared use. Should the shake their drive?
That's okay.
Oh, we could hurt.
I called a meeting to order. Lebanon City Council Committees Meeting for September fifteenth. Two thousand twenty five. Uh, calling in order. Get a roll call here. Uh, roll call. Delkey.
There.
Farrah here. Cornish. Smith.
Here.
Marcinkowski.
Here.
Bennett. Washington. Mister Bennett was had an accident today in Gable. He's too sore coming. Got rear ended on I sixty four.
But. Just eighty years.
Driving. From what he explained, it's just some young kid who just took up a road. Us. More and ended up running into him. So. We do have a quorum. So we can continue making recommendations. On items. Uh, from the committees. First committee is Finance Committee. Um, there are. Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot about the audience. I apologize. I just wanna get out of here. So anybody have anything to say from the audience? Speak to the council.
Did the council answer questions?
No.
No. We may answer questions. Under Alderman first importance. I know the places that we need to agree. But if you want, if you want to talk. Come up to the gate. State your name. And. Present it, you got five minutes? I don't know how to do the timer, but it's right up there in the wall.
Uh, my name is Dave Raffo and I was at the meeting last week. And the city attorney, if I understood correctly, said that. The people in the. Group homes could not be arrested and could not be incarcerated. Well, there was someone sent me a. Printout. Of the Clinton County Sheriff. I called today to check and they said, yes, they have a person. This was there in twenty or twenty one. And is back in there now. That's thirty six years old, has the mentality of a three year old. Shouldn't be there, but is there, so. I just wonder if maybe the. City Council and the mayor, I'll give you guys all a copy of this, could. And maybe instruct them, the attorney, that maybe we could get some of these things done. And and on the criminal thing, yes. On the criminal side of it, that um. It can be given. Something, something could be done and maybe he's not doing his job. And um. I uh. I was on the council years ago and. The uh. Remember the one night the. The attorney said we couldn't do something. And the mayor turned to the attorney and said, I don't wanna hear that. I wanna hear what we can do and how we can do it. For the people of citizens of the town, instead of. It's easy for the lawyer to say, oh, we can't do that. We can't do that. And I think right here shows that he's not doing his job. And I don't know if the, if it's, if the police has been misinformed by him, but I do believe. That if they can arrest him and put him in jail. In Clinton County, they should be able to do the same thing here, and that might help. With what's going on, and I don't know if there's a statute of limitations of. You know. It's too long, they can't do go back on that lady that broke in the house and broke the window, or the one that beat the neighbor up, or the all the different ones that are redacted that have. All the issues that have happened from the existing group home. I think. There's some more information should be, should be dealt with. And uh, that's all I have to say on that issue.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yep.
Hey, Ben.
Right, let's make sure I get my five minutes on the clock. Don't wanna go over.
Well, it's six thirty four.
All right, seventeen seconds. First, I'd like to say I really don't appreciate you last week saying that it was some kind of buddy buddy system, this is Washington, because I feel you're completely out of line in saying what you did. But you're entitled to your opinion and it is yours. Yeah, I know, and everybody does have one. Absolutely correct. My question would be going into tonight, you guys making the decision after I left last week, I did watch the rest of that because I just couldn't sit here anymore, because I really do wonder why decisions are made. Without a lot of the city knowing about it. I'm sure, yeah, I like your smile look, I got a lot of that from you last week, but really uh. Question, again, what you guys are doing, I don't really think. You know, not knowing even what you guys are doing or what you're voting on. Uh. You've got rates from. A bank that's out of town. You don't care how the optics look. You obviously don't. You guys don't, that's fine. I saw it went and vote, and the only one that voted against it was Miss Cornish. But if rates really were the big deal. And you guys really gave. That much concern about how much rate you're getting back for the town. Then why did you not look into the Illinois funds? Anybody know what that is? Anybody? No? The Illinois Funds is an account that all municipalities in Illinois Police Department's libraries can get. And it's based off the Fed rate. And the Fed rate, if I look at it for the last few months. Actually, for the last. Half of this year was an average of four point four percent. So if you guys wanted to take all of your money and even keep some of it here and to take the rest of it to another bank out of town. That would still make less money than putting your funds into here that you're going to invest. And the idea of moving our money out and not letting the town know about it, because you guys put it in the file weekly, which nobody gets. You know, again, this goes back to bad optics. And you know, the reason I am, I don't even live here. And the fact that I'm the one that's getting upset about this, because I see right through this crap for what it is. It's. It's immoral. If I look at all the rest of the towns around you, Breeze, Ava's and Trenton, Freeburg, New Athens. Even Edwardsville, Glen Carvin, they've all got Illinois Funds accounts for their investments. Guess who does not, never has, Illinois or Lebanon? Why?
Is that a bank?
Well, see, that's the problem. Why is it, I'm not a banker. I'm not a banker, I'm not an alderman. Why is it I took? Few days. Find out all this information you guys weren't even presented or don't even know about. This is the problem. You got people up here, no offense. That are making decisions on things you don't know about, because you don't have a finance committee that knows anything about banking, and the one guy you did have, you didn't let him make any decisions. So he's gone. So make that make sense to all these people. You wanna make money for the town? Fine, do it. Then go find the route that does it. You know, it's just. Ah, this, yeah, I'm red in the face, shaky about this because. It's just aggravating. You see, Lebanon is a consistent joke on Facebook. It's like, oh, what crap's going on up town again? And I'll be honest with you, I'm getting sick of having a business in town where every time something goes on here, it's like, oh great, we're in the freaking news again. So it gets old. And this looks like shit, it's bad optics. And that's all I gotta say. I don't wanna take up any more time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hey, Alderman first comments.
Yeah, I got one. Uh, to caveat off what you just said. Don't tell me, I'm speaking about myself, don't say what I care and what I don't care about. I am not the treasurer, I do not deal with finance, I am not the subject matter expert on that.
No, but you voted on it.
You're done talking. You had your chance, this is mine. So again. You don't tell me what I care and what I don't care about, I just did. That's great, we can see each other outside after this or whatever.
You gonna, you gonna beat me up?
I never said anything about that. I'm done talking to you, or you can leave the building. One of the two is gonna happen.
Okay.
Yes.
You finished?
Yeah.
Anybody else have comments? I do have in. Another anonymous letter. And I will read it. It does make sense.
George, George, you flip it over. I'm let that over.
I see the part in that.
Do you see what I put on there?
Yeah.
But you had an anonymous letter last time, it wasn't anonymous, I just put it on your guy's desk. Or FYI. Right.
Okay, this is letters in response to my comment about citizens writing to the council anonymously, and you can place on being acted on. Anonymous letters are last letters, doesn't mean we don't read them and we don't look at them. Just means that we're not gonna take an action. We probably won't even talk about it in the meeting. Uh, at the September second committee meeting. There really wasn't any committee number four. On September second. Uh, we had two letters that concerned citizens. I looked at them, I read them, and they were legitimate concerns. But unless a citizen is willing to state. Who they are, what they make it, I don't think we should be acting on them. Because, you know, it would be one thing if. Somebody was making complaint. Against an individual member of the staff, police department, elected officials, et cetera. Uh, yeah, we can handle that in a closed meeting. Unfortunately, and I have to agree with this, as if I read the letter here. Uh. But there's no executive session for us to discuss it. We do not do executive sessions at committee meetings, because our attorney. Needs to be present to make sure we don't violate any of the meeting laws as a result of that. Uh. Then the July twenty eighth meeting, we're going back ways. City Treasurer Jessica Lamar had to remind council members not to share her request for proposals for the new search. For a new bank for the same years. She stated that she had made a limited number of copies, labeled them confidential, we're not copying, yet. Another bank was providing the information. It appears though, as though our council member failed to protect the sensitive information. And that is an admonishment that I'm gonna make. Is when we're the city and the council, if we get anything that's confidential. Is for us only. It has to stay that way. It has to stay that way. If we had a complaint against uh, a police officer, for example. Uh. We can't allow that to get out into the public until the city council has all the facts and has met an executive slash will deal with it. If a person filing a complaint is leaked. Then that creates a problem, because that person could uh. It could be uh, lead lead to that person uh. Getting their. Windows. And I don't want, I've never seen that here in town, we've been very lucky. But we could have uh, uh, action against that individual. So, I wanna make sure we do that, and that the city council, we need to make sure. That we are, we are in fact in a position of trust in the community. Uh. And we need to protect that trust. By. Being professional. We are paid, so we're professionals. Be professional, follow the rules. Follow the law, that we don't. We don't uh, create an issue that we don't need. By uh, saying the council will act only upon a named complaint, sounds like, like an excuse not to act. In my opinion, that's not an excuse not to act. That's a reason. That we can't act, because how can we have all of the facts? For persons' amounts?
Yep.
We're only getting one side. So by signing it. And say, I don't wish this to become public, then the mayor and the corporate members of the council will know to maintain the confidentiality. And that's important. We have a trust. To do that. That's all I'm gonna say about that letter. And. Moving on in the agenda. The Finance Committee. Number one, what's the discussion on banking authority and account access?
All right, this would be part of the uh, the discussions with the new bank uh, who has access to be what? Uh. Down on that. Uh, statutory, uh, the uh, account control person is our treasurer, and uh, we can sign for things with the treasurer, the mayor. Uh, we've got some others things where uh, I guess it's not statutory, but what we like to do is on this sheet. Uh, online access to move money between funds, that would be Michelle, the accountant, and Tricia, I'm not sure of her titles. Honestly, but uh, she's out of ministry of assistant. Uh, so do you only access to see what's going on in the accounts? That would be Stephanie, clerk of the mayor. Uh, making her go to deposits, the third Stephanie. Uh, positive pay uh, access, that's for detecting fraud. Uh, that would be uh, Michelle and Tricia. Uh, front alerts would go to Michelle and the treasurer, Patricia. So. That is it.
Thanks. And question, the discussion. And that will, that's public information, we'll post that somewhere.
It'll be written in the ordinance.
What?
It's gonna be written in the ordinance when everything's said and done, the final voting, this will be included.
The ordinance, yeah. Okay. Um. Item number two under finance.
Okay, uh, this is another opportunity to uh. Get some more uh, return on our, on our funds. Uh. Apparently for several years, we've had uh, some sewer fund uh. Plenty of them, an account with Raymond James. Uh. Apparently it hasn't been uh. Looked at in several years, uh, we've got a hundred fifty, more than a hundred fifty thousand dollars in there. Year to date, we've made one tenth of one percent, uh, that's about a hundred fifty three bucks on that. And uh, the kicker is seventy five of that went to fees. So uh, what I wanted to do is move it out of this account, uh, we still have to do some things to. Uh, be able to make that happen. Put it in the bank account, that we can get some more money. Uh, maybe longer term, move it into a C, but.
What is? What is?
So it, all I know is that it's a sewer fund account, that this, we have had this for years, um, they said it's. They wouldn't release any information to me because there's been no contact from the city for four years on it. And so we have no authority to access anything, so they had to fax over paperwork for me to get all that lined up. But obviously, the performance is terrible on it. Um, I know that it came from a sewer fund, so I'm just gonna place it back into the sewer fund checking account, and so we can get some more in depth of what's going on with it. Um, I will also, just to kinda give you guys some insight, the Illinois. Funds that he's speaking of. Uh, they're also called the LGIP, which is the local government investment pool. Those are investment funds. And so right now, with the checking stuff that we're doing, those are all our operational checking accounts, the one point seven that we have, a million that we have in investment funds. And potentially this down the road is when we would start exploring Illinois funds and looking at local CDs and things like that. Even though we've said that we really wanna try and keep that money. Local, um, and we'll go into that more, get on your next agenda item, we'll go into that more then. Um, but just letting you guys know, we're just gonna move this back into the sewer fund checking account. Get it earning a higher interest rate and kinda get it back in house to where when we wanna figure out if we're doing CDs or what, it's easily accessible to be able to. Cause it's gonna be a process to get it switched out of Raymond James.
Okay.
Any questions to just? Next item on your agenda. Uh. That's fun. So the next thing we're all gonna talk about is item number three. Is a discussion on possibly contracting out weed eating, actually, it is um. Treming. Uh, for the cemetery for fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven. And instead of, and this is a process that takes us a while to get. Uh, estimates so that we can uh, budget for them. Uh. But uh. This year, I, I raised the question because I saw. That we had been spending three thousand dollars twice. For trimming at the cemetery, and when I asked the question, I said, I thought we were doing everything internally, while we contracted out the trimming. And was basically because of the rain, the brass is growing faster than our staff can keep up with it. So they, they contracted that out this year. I think that what he wants to do, what the, what Cody wants to do is contract out. The trimming for the cemetery. And I don't know why this is under finance, only because it involves money, not because it's cemetery, cemetery community.
He'll still do the mowing. It's just gonna be the weed trimming, it'll be somebody else. If it gets approved it. Et cetera, et cetera, so.
Basically, it's gonna be taken from Peter to pay Paul, but then the fund in the city. Okay, and item number four. Again, under finance. It's a reminder that there is a special meeting on September twenty second at five thirty P M. Right, this is a meeting before the regular council meeting for a public presentation on banking RFPs. On banking RFPs, it'll be posted on the bulletin board, city website, et cetera. So. We have a, we're getting more educated on banking. For the city. Okay, water sewer doesn't have a chair at the moment? I don't know of anything for water and sewer. A personnel is not here because of accident? Anything from health and safety, but.
Hmm, no, just a contract.
You got the contracts, the guy. So that's a big piece.
Yeah, that.
Hmm?
That's about it.
Okay. Getting to unfinished business. I should have commented on this on the alderman, I can't. But I had a lot of, but I'm on that about. That came up tonight. Unfinished business. Uh, we have. A proposal to do a crack fill process on Lebanon streets throughout the city, not just in one area. And it's to uh, fill in cracks. So they don't expand over the winter and deterioration. Do you wanna talk about that a more?
Just like George was saying, it's to fill in cracks all over the town. We got. Streets all over from Northland Road, Whittaker Road. I'm not gonna name them all, North Alton. West shoots, there's a whole bunch, it's all over the town, so it's not like it's just north of town. Altogether, it's already budgeted for this year, it's gonna come out to fifty eight thousand and some change. But it is already in the budget. We've been pushing this along. And be just been passing the buck for probably two years, Cody says on it. So I'm basically. Recommending that we put it on next week's agenda to get approved. It's already budgeted for this year, so it's not like we're trying to get money for ten years from now. Those of you aldermen in here that you could see. What's your attachments? The streets, again, it's basically fifty eight thousand and some change. And I'm recommending that uh, we put it on next week's agenda to get approved.
Do I get nods of? Instances? Okay. Put that on the agenda for next Monday. Or actions. And we talked about the special meeting. Uh, item number two, discuss approve a sidewalk plan.
So the sidewalk plan, pretty much. Long story short is if you as your owner of your sidewalk, the sidewalk in front of your house. The city will reimburse you up to fifty percent and the other fifty percent is on you. I don't know how to much more to put that in layman's terms. Obviously, there's steps you gotta go through with getting this done. Obviously, get with. Paul up here first, then Paul will get with Cody, Cody will get with you and talk finances. But long story short, in front of your house, the sidewalk, if it's messed up that bad. The city will cover up the fifty percent, then you as the owner will cover up the other fifty percent.
This is an ordinance, we already have an ordinance on there, this is actually. Changing that ordinance, it'll be put in ordinance form domestic.
So I'm re, I'm recommending that this gets approved on the next week's. Put on next week's uh, agenda as well for approval.
The only thing question I have is it says here. Gee, the fee for all such constructions shall be one dollar. Is that, and it says, we have a note there, choose a price. Uh, is that one dollar per square foot? Or one dollar for linear foot? Or would it be some other figure? So we need to decide on that.
Just to tap on that, uh, so Cody gave you guys the one that he likes from his Cuda as like an example, he wanted you guys to move it forwards, but he was working on it with Luke. They haven't finalized one to show you guys.
Right.
So he did everything in there that.
Yeah. The, the, we have to come up with a fee, so. We need to let Luke know what we believe that we should do. Right now, it's a dollar twenty or a dollar something, a dollar something. For uh. Each square yard or square.
The current ordinance is sixty cents per square foot.
Yeah, sixty cents. Per square foot. If anybody's ever done a sidewalk, sixty cents per square foot, it is. Not even going to be ten percent. Of that cost.
I think it's from the seventies, that's what I meant, that hasn't been updated.
That hasn't been updated for a long time. So chances are we'll be going to a much larger figure on that. They need to up, up, and by the way, the language is up to fifty percent. So the city, if a person wants to get it done faster. Then they make it contribute more. On their side, the city will do less. The city will, in any case, the city will not. If this passes, it will not contribute more than fifty percent of the cost of a new sidewalk gutter or curb. And by the way, the price is higher for the driveway portion of the sidewalk. It doesn't, it's more wear and tear. Any other questions about sidewalk plan? And the other question is about sidewalk plan. Next item under unfinished business. Is, it really is an unfinished, it's all new business. It is approved the removal of three trees in the city town square, anybody know?
We're, we're, we're just gonna table that till next meeting.
Okay. Then there is the, uh, plan commission findings and recommendations. We need to compile those and get them issued until the numbers are announced, so we can really discuss them intelligently. Is there a lot of recommendations came out at last plan council, plan committee meeting? New business. Now, a discussion and recommendation. To approve a plan for Metro East Park's Recreation District Grant. To increase the Illinois Four Sidewalk Project that shoots to Schloffer Drive. From a five foot to a ten foot shared use path. And the, uh, costs on that are here. So, the original budget for this grant was a hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars. If we apply for the Metro East Park Grant, which will contribute. To, we would have to pay twenty percent match on that part of it, but even with the match on the grant, um. Our local share to do this project would be a hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars. The local share on the original one was a hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-two. The difference is, is that we would have a ten-foot wide shared use path. Which is a true shared use path, you can have bicycles and pedestrians on the same path. There's sufficient room to pass and give room, and it'll be on the west side of Route Four, Madison Street. From Shoot Street to Schloffer Drive, so all the way down to True Valley, or that Ace Hardwood. All the way down to Ace Hardwood, and, uh, the total of that project. It goes from six hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars to eight hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred forty-seven dollars. Except that, the ME PRD grant would be two hundred twenty-two thousand, uh. And if we don't get it this year, we'll get it next year. Because those grants on the first of July, there's, when the grant, grant cycle opens for those grants. On July one each year, the first of July, there's usually a line of seven, eight, up to ten. Uh, governmental bodies seeking grants, and they'll be in line, and they take them in that order. Right now, there's above three hundred thousand dollars sitting in that fund that hasn't been allocated. Four ninety-three thousand, six hundred eight dollars, an unpledged fund. So they have a sufficient funds for this project if we grab them first. Go ahead, ask questions, I, I've done a lot of these grants.
All right, so the eight hundred ninety-five thousand number you mentioned, that's the total cost of the table, and then we might get like, what, two twenty thousand?
We'll get two hundred twenty-two thousand back.
So it's still our bottom line cost, and it would be like six, better be something.
So, yeah.
Ten grand for five hundred thousand.
Yeah, be a half grand for five hundred thousand, let's do it most of the bulk of it.
We're basically extending from a five foot to a ten foot for about four thousand dollars.
And it's gonna be twelve hundred three, um, real shared use path along that section from shoots. Down to Ace Hardwood, Schloffer Drive.
They have, or like you said, four hundred and some thousand available, so we're gonna try to get that this year, but if not, we could get right in line July first. So, which is not gonna start till this, the engineering is now, the grant construction part would be fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven.
And these are reimbursement grants, so we have to put the money out, get reimbursed, but reimburse it very fast.
And their first come, first served, they're not a competitive grant, so, well, the TW has already reached out on our behalf and pre-qualified us.
Great, nice, thanks.
Yeah, that's great.
So is that something we wanna recommend forward, moving forward?
Yes.
Thanks. We will do that. And. Yes, go ahead, Lynn.
Uh, we had talked about that alley. Uh, behind. These streets. How, you know, is it higher than the church? And, uh, something new's been done with that because of the drainage problem. Is there gonna be, is there gonna, like, gonna be something about that?
Last I remember Cody did get with that individual that. Talked about that, and then to had talked. That's about all I know on that for sure, but I, I'll follow up, get you answers. I do remember that, though, how you talked about the alley stays higher than the church.
Yeah.
I remember Cody did get with that individual, I can't recall his name, but I'll get, I'll get back to you on that.
I know they're, um, they're, they've al- almost completed the mold problem. But there's no sense in spending that time money if the rain is just from running back.
I'll see where he's at with that, with that individual.
Okay, another item of, of new business. Is to discuss and recommend a Business District Grant for two thousand, three hundred eleven dollars and fifty cents. The Lebanon Chamber of Commerce to refinish the original upstairs flooring. On the Lebanon Blizzard Center located at two twenty-one West. Uh, the floor has not been upgraded since the building was built twenty-five years ago, so. Uh, it is a grant, uh, they are going to be doing their part of the mansion, and they are gonna do our part if it's a roof.
Just to have a packet, there's pictures of the floor on that. So you can kind of get an idea of what they're, what they're.
I'm on that floor all the time.
So there's definitely a distinctive change in color.
His change color is warm, it's.
Uh, they should be at the very back of your, both packets there. It'll look like this on the top, very, very true. Now I need my pictures off of yours.
Hit George.
And that money will come out as a business district funds.
Is that part of the ten thousand dollar?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be ten thousand, be up to that, so, but yes, so they would be the third recipient so far. That's, we haven't given any money out, but we're quiet and in process.
We've got your write-up, and there should be the quotes and some photos. And then they are not-for-profit, but you know, we did put it there too. They are a part of the business community, they do a lot for the business community, and they also do pay taxes on the property, so. They did qualify for all of them. And if anybody has questions, here you.
I'm just ready, yeah, oh, Carrie. How are you?
Any questions? We got the money person for the chamber here. I recommend we move forward with that, uh, doing that grant.
Yes, yeah.
And with that. I believe we've gone through all that was given to us.
Thanks, can I take you back to streets now, each one minute? It says, Charlie, when you mentioned the amount for the crack sale, what is that amount?
Fifty-eight thousand and thirty dollars.
Of the mouse that came out on the, uh, paperwork, only add up to eighteen thousand, four hundred and seventy, so. At least for the ones that were shown on this, if I had, so I just don't wanna get out there around, I just definitely added. As, 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 that's just what they added up to, I know four of them, and I just simply added them here, so.
This is the number I got from Cody. Yeah, maybe this is only part, maybe this is only part of the first phase, I know there's a couple phases, but.
Michelle, two questions, like, my, my, the amount, I was like, oh, well, they, that wasn't what I.
We'll make sure Paul has the right number to put on. The agenda for next week.
So Charlie, I'll touch on the cemetery thing too, about the weed eating. Uh, part of that that came forward was people were complaining, uh, of dead patches around the gravestones. So to make it more feasible for them to get all that done, they do use chemicals for treating weeds and just to look better, weed eating. But I would need some help with that.
And when you've got a line trimmer, it's easier to tear up the ground. Boy, it's quiet, thank you. Does anybody else have any other business?
George, I got something for, uh, each own person, uh, pass out, and hopefully, um, next week. Um, after a meeting, we could possibly go and discuss. Uh, after the meeting.
Are you asking for a closed session, Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, so, there's a request for a closed session.
Is actually. I've, I've got a packet here from an individual, and, uh, like, distribute it, I'll get you one as well, and then, uh.
It's not the light, is it?
Sorry?
Not the light, is it?
I, I'm not sure, it's in this bag, and so.
Okay. If there is no further business.